How do you do a screenshot?
Good evening, everyone. This is our May 7th council work session teleconference meeting. So we want to welcome everyone who has joined us via teleconference. Hopefully you can see us all on the screen. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. And I will do a roll call for attendance for for minutes and also for our members who are watching online. I will start with the council members in Ward one, Councilmember Sandy McGrew.
I'm here.
Joellen Wilson.
Here.
Sean Tolan.
Here.
Nick Estes.
Here.
Brooke Schmidt.
Here.
Also join us is City Manager Billy Peppers.
Good evening.
Assistant City Manager Nathan Ingram.
Good evening, thank you.
City Clerk Annie Fortner.
Good evening.
Looks like we have our Melissa Forster, are you online, I think?
I'm here, good evening.
Thank you, good evening, Melissa, great to have you with us. And our City Attorney Bobby Dyer.
Hello.
And our IT Manager Mike Morgan is here, keeping us hopefully on the screen and and running live here. So is anyone else online with us tonight? Okay, great. Well, thank you all for joining us and again, thank you for your your great use of technology and again, observing our social distancing during during the month of May, we will be meeting tonight and then our our regular council meeting in May via teleconference. So but we can get everything done this way. So I would like to start, we have a, I have a proclamation that's not on your agenda, but it is a timely matter. So I'd like to present a proclamation and I'm sorry, we we are not there presented in person. But tonight I'd like to present a proclamation in observance of the 51st Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May 3rd through May 9th, 2020. Whereas the Office of the City Clerk, a time honored and vital part of the local government exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of the City Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the City Clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and the agencies of government at other levels. And whereas city clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and partiality, rendering equal services to all. Whereas the City Clerk serves as the Information Center on Functions of Local Government and Community. Whereas city clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the City Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize accomplishments of the Office of the City Clerk. Now therefore, I, Bill Grant, Mayor of the City of Canton, do recognize the week of May 3rd through May 9th, 2020, as Professional Municipal City Clerk Week and further extend appreciation to our City Clerk, Ms. Annie Fortner, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Day the 7th day of May 2020. So Ms. Fortner, again, we want to thank you and recognize your great service to our city. And again, I'm sorry, I'm not here to present this to you in person, but we'll make it up for you, make it up to you in the future. So.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome, we appreciate you, everything you do. So at this time, we have, you have in your agenda, the consideration of approved minutes, you have the council meeting draft minutes from our April 16th teleconference meeting. Do you have any changes or discussion on those minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
This is Brooke, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes by Ms. Schmidt and we have a second by Mr. Estes, did I see your hand up? Mr. Estes, I think you're muted.
Sorry, sorry, yes, I second.
Okay, all in favors, say aye.
Aye.
I guess we should do a roll call, correct? Okay, let's do a roll call to be official, Ms. McGrew.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Tolan.
Yes.
Mr. Estes.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
All members voted to approve the minutes. Next, we have informational items, you have in your packet, the review of March financials with our Finance Director, again, Ms. Melissa Forster is on with us tonight. If you have any questions, these are for information only. But Ms. Forster has joined us in case anyone has any questions for the March financials. Seeing none, we'll move on. No old business, since this is a work session, we'll move into new business now. New business item A, discussion on approval of 2020 City Auction Items for Disposition. Assistant City Manager Nathan Ingram.
I'll take the lead on that, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
As you, as you know, we we require our departments to surplus specific items if those are necessary to go to auction. And we have, Mr. Ingram's may give us a little bit of background on on auction dates. We've had to move these around a little bit. But we've given you a list of all of the major surplus items that we would like council to approve so that we can move forward with the auction. And Mr. Ingram?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Peppers, as y'all probably are already aware that the auction was originally slated to be in May because of the current economic, current COVID pandemic, it was moved to June 13th. We do need to get these approved by council and if I may add, if it would be permissible, could we potentially get action on this tonight so that we can get a list of this to the auctioneer Jeff Dobson a little sooner rather than later, if you will, and get these items, go ahead and get them prepped for the auction. If not, fully okay, we can get these approved in two weeks, just throwing that out there, thank you, council.
Ms. Wilson, do you have a question?
I do, what is the time? That's June 13th, what time would it start?
That's an excellent question, Ms. Wilson, I have to get the exact time the actual auction starts. Historically, it started usually around 10 o'clock in the morning and it goes until the, all the items have been auctioned. But excellent question, I will get technically the exact time that that starts for y'all.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda item for auction to be held on June 13th, 2020.
And this is Sean Tolan, I would second Ms. Wilson's motion.
Okay. Mr. Ingram, I did have questions, it looked, we had two of our Tahos from our police department in that, is that correct? Are those two different? Okay.
Two different ones.
Are those two of our older, oldest ones, I assume?
Yes, there, those are two that were in the first year that we started our current program of Tahos.
Okay, okay, that's, that's what I saw, so. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Again, we'll do a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, Ms. McGrew?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Tolan?
Yes.
Mr. Estes?
Yes.
And Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Motion is approved. Okay, item B, discussion of alternate parking deck layout, Utility Engineer Dave Katavio.
At our last progress meeting, Clark Patterson Lee was asked to kind of give a scaled down alternative to their parking deck. They've come up with an option that is pretty much just the lower level that they're now and with a roof on it. No improvements to the intersections, no elevators or anything like that. And they provided a little concept and price for it. I think it's around 128 spaces. And I think the cost is around $3 million, I think.
What I have, Mr. Mayor, just to give you some comparisons, the initial deck design that was done was based on 303 spaces in the deck. And there were, we have roughly 31 spaces adjacent to that at City Hall. And so with the initial deck design, we were going to get a net of 229 spaces. And that cost was going to be somewhere around $6 million, which would include that intersection realignment at West Marietta and Archer as well. The alternative proposal was for us to be able to have a deck built on Archer Street lot that would basically not include any ramps. It would have a level that is at the same height as the City Hall parking lot, same elevation. And then it would have a lower level. Their new design has the entrance to that lower level off of Archer Street closer to the intersection. So it's, so it's on Archer Street as opposed to being on the West Marietta Church Street side. Their design has 139 total spaces, but that includes 26 spaces on our City Hall lot, which would have to be reconfigured slightly. So ultimately, you would have 56 spaces on that lowest level and 57 spaces on the upper level. It would also include some stair towers. So that scenario, we net 46 spaces. And the cost is somewhere between 2.5 and 3 million, depending on on all of the work and finishes.
So we're netting 46 spaces that I guess we're taking in into consideration the spaces for an existing parking lot now.
That's correct.
And then the spaces or the City Hall space is correct.
That's correct. And right now, we have, between the two lots, we have a total of two accessible spaces. With alternate two, we have five accessible spaces. And again, if you were to pull in next to City Hall off of Academy Street, you would be able to pull through the City Hall parking lot onto that upper level, which has 57 spaces. So we end up losing, I think, seven spaces on the lower level. What we have to include the stairwell and the entrance into the deck off of Archer Street. And then we get those 57 spaces on the upper level. You're netting 46 on the alternate. The one thing I would note is that if we don't move forward with a parking deck on that site, we're probably still going to have to expend some funds on that lot as it is right now. It's not been resurfaced in a number of years. And and we've defrayed some of that cost, knowing that there's going to be some type of construction going on there. But I don't know that we're going to be able to keep passing that on for another year or two.
Right. I know we, council was interested in looking at a, you know, a scaled down deck for cost and just for for scale also. But if I'm calculating correctly, if we're only netting 46 spaces, that is over $65,000 per space for those 46 more spaces. I know we need to do work on the lot, I know the existing lot is not ideal. But it'd be something, something to consider as we go forward, I know we've been discussing this for a while, but Mr. Estes, you have a question?
Yeah, I guess I was curious, do we have an estimate of what the actual improvements would need to be regardless of whether or not we had a deck?
We don't, we we haven't priced out paving, but my guess is we would have to repave the lot, restrike it. There might be a little bit of milling work in some areas of it. But, you know, it's not going to be, it's not going to be a quarter of a million dollar project. It's probably more like in the hundred to 150,000 range, depending on exactly what's going on there.
Okay, yeah, I think, you know, it'd be good to understand that, you know, at first I was, you know, excited about the alternative, you know, I think as we think about the long term strategy for parking, you know, that probably isn't the only one, you know, there's probably going to be multiple needed to address, you know, the expansion over time and and other sites. I didn't realize it was only a net 46 and that Mayor's comments are is, I don't know, tougher to justify at this point. But the same time, I think we've got to, got to think open minded about it. But I do get a little bit of anxiety about the the cost per space there. At a, at two and a half million, it's still 55,000, so.
And on the original one, Mr. Peppers, you say we would net 229?
229, correct.
Which would be, again, around 26,000 per space, six million, did you say?
Yes.
We're getting a lot more spaces for that and the cost per space is is less, so, I mean, from that perspective, the scaled down version, you know, economics don't make sense to me there. But again, I think also, this is something, I know we've taken our time with this, but given the current situation, I think we still have some time to 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 think about this and figure it out. And and this is something I think we really need to take our time and and think wisely on it. Ms. Smith?
Um, yes, I just wondered if you guys could remind us, just for the record and as part of our discussion, how much money do we have budgeted for a parking deck?
It's coming out of splosh funds and and likely would come out of a couple of different buckets in the splosh fund. You know, we, we had initially gone into it trying to keep it below $6 million because we were going to be pulling some likely out of general government building splosh and maybe some coming out of transportation splosh or or what have you. So. But it would be a fully funded sales tax project.
Thanks.
And yet, again, given the current situation and not knowing exactly what, we know there'll be some impact from the pandemic on on sales tax, we were not sure how much yet or, you know, if this is going to be drawn out much longer or if there'd be, you know, more, more impacts in the fall. But again, I think it's just more, more reason we we take a little bit more time to figure this out and get it right, so.
So one of the reasons why we wanted to bring this directly to you is that what we have on the alternate is based off of estimates and concepts. It's not based off of actual plans and construction drawing, we haven't gone that far, which would give us a better number. But we didn't want to move that route if this wasn't something that the council was comfortable with. And we don't have to have an answer tonight, but if that's the route we want to go, it will take some time for them to do the the designs and get everything ready on the architectural side. And so we just want to make sure that, you know, we're not going down a rabbit hole if that's, if that's not something that you're considering.
Yeah, I mean, I would, we, we can think about it, discuss, I mean, I would hate to design yet another deck and especially when, you know, the the cost doesn't seem to justify that. But again, Ms. Ms. McGrew, I think you had a question.
Thank you, does this estimate include restrooms?
It does not.
And we wanted restrooms on this corner.
We did not include them just because we were going to be losing additional spaces. And at the, at the time when we were trying to do the alternate based on the cost estimate that we had, it was going to be, you know, substantially more to add and take away parking spaces. So if we added restrooms to it, the cost per space would go up, you know, considerably more.
I understand.
But if that's what council wants to do in the design, we could push that further. What we asked them to do was to bring us an alternate design and give us an idea of how many spaces we could get with a price. If we want to take some of that away and put it into other facilities within that space, we can certainly do that and get them to come back with a cost on that.
I know, it was a big topic to get public restrooms downtown.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Wilson, I think you had a comment, then Ms. Schmidt, I think, after that.
Okay, I just wanted to ask, have we abandoned the the consideration for for a parking deck with the apartments? Has that been abandoned or are we, we're doing, we're sort of getting estimates for both?
My understanding is that we haven't received full costs associated with the public private partnership across the street.
Okay.
At this time.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's, I mean, we don't have costs on that, but again, it's still a possible option out there again. So I think, again, we have, we have Tom on our side at the moment, so I think that 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 works for us at this time. So, Ms. Schmidt?
Yes, I just had a couple, well, the first was a comment, just, so when we asked for a scaled down version, it was keeping in mind that we might also have a parking deck across the way that connected to the mill. Just to remind, you know, and for anybody who's watching who wanted to know. So I guess my question is, well, my first comment is, we also talked about how this site that we're talking about now has all those hills up to downtown, like up to where the shops are, up to where the restaurants are. And it, it's really difficult terrain, it's a tough walk up that hill for a lot of people. So I just wanted to remind everybody that that was one of the points we talked about in our discussions about location. And then does the first site, does the first plan we have for this site have public restrooms?
No.
Okay. Like to see public restrooms into both of those options.
Right, so so from that standpoint, whether you build a restroom in the alternate one or the original plan, it's going to be about the same cost, it's going to be around the same location and size and it's going to have the same impact as it relates to number of parking spaces that you take up for those. You know, I guess what we were thinking from the standpoint of the of the scaled down option is that it would provide parking associated with City Hall, it would provide parking associated with the Historical Society Museum, it would provide parking to the backside of facilities on Archer Street. So you've got a salon, you've got a special event venue, you've got a new restaurant that's coming in back there. It's not a hilly walk to get to the Panera and to that end of town. And it's not bad going towards places like Downtown Kitchen on the other end of Archer Street. You know, that, that was the one consideration that we took there. If you put ramps into that, even if you scale down the size of that deck, you're going to eat up so many parking spaces with those ramps just to get it in there and that's going to increase the cost. So one of the reasons why the cost per space go down so much on that larger option is because, you know, just, just the cost as you go up each tier goes down significantly.
Thanks, Billy.
I think one of the other considerations on the Archer Street site was the the more attractive it would make for the Jones Building, possible sale of that to have parking available to that for for a larger tenant there. Also, so it's consideration there as well, something to think about there. And on on restrooms, I know we have also discussed about, you know, depending on what happens with the Jones Building or someone takes that about maybe looking at a public private partnership there and having, you know, some public restrooms or having some space of that dedicated to the city or visitor center. There's also been some discussion about, you know, the front part of the, the, the fire station that the city still owns and possibly make that visitor visitor center and restroom. So I think we have other options, you know, in addition to the parking deck for public restrooms that we can still consider as well, so. Mr. Tolan, did you have a?
Yeah, just curious as to what the accumulated consulting fees have been for this particular project so far? Just curious what that number looks like.
Dave, do you remember?
I think it's around $250,000 and those plans are ready to advertise if you wanted to go that way.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's on the original deck, correct? That design is finished and?
That's correct.
Correct, yes.
Right. Any other comments or questions at the moment?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr.?
Neither some, neither site behind Panera nor the Archer Street site seem optimum to me. Is there another site we could consider?
Not that we don't currently own or have some type of easement on.
Okay.
At the moment, because things are always subject to change, but that's, at the moment, those, those seem to be our two best bets, so.
So Bill, let me, I mentioned one other thing and I want to go back to what Ms. Schmidt had mentioned and and that's just really, that, that's really weighing heavy on my mind because I thought that that was the impetus for, that is, the the proposed apartment complex and wrapped parking deck. I thought that was the impetus for the consideration of the lesser or the the alternative parking deck. And so I understand from Mr. Peppers that nothing has evolved on that. But is there, are there, are there other opportunities to provide parking to our citizens that might include that Hill Street location that you guys have either taken, you know, had had interest in or or had conversations about?
Other options?
That, that would, that would, that would include an increased number of of parking spaces for whatever, for whatever reason or whatever option there on Hill Street.
We currently have 125, you know, dedicated spaces there. You know, I think that, again, the conversations have been ongoing about the next phase of Academy and Main and what that is, consists of, so. And if it's, you know, the apartment complex has been one, one scenario that's been discussed, you know, most recently, so that's the only one I'm aware of at this time. So but I think some others have been discussed on that site, you know, prior to that project. So I think anything else that would take place on that site would have to involve parking for that, you know, for that property owner. So.
It could also be a public, we would have to enter into a public private partnership. So that's what we would have, need to decide if we went with the apartment complex, right?
Right, so, so again, that's, that's not, that's not taken off the table yet. It's just, we haven't gotten specifics or numbers on that yet, so, again, I think we're, want to do our due diligence and see what a scaled down deck at Archer would be. So we have that, you know, approximate number now, we have what the larger deck would be. So that when, if and when we do get that proposal from the developer there, we'll, you know, we can compare and see what our best options are at this time, so.
As you said, Mr. Mayor, we have, we have plenty of time to kick this around and and COVID-19 has afforded us some additional time to kick it around.
Yeah. I think so. Okay. So item C, discussion on. So, item C, discussion on awarding the Amos Road Booster Pump Station improvements to Lanier Contracting Company in the amount of $653,311. Uh, utility engineer, Mr. Hattavian?
Yes, this was originally part of the Laurel Canyon Booster Station project. We split them up, it made more sense, um, to do it that way. Project was advertised, we received five bids, um, contractor was, uh, is good, we've used them before, and, um, it's just waiting on, uh, an award.
So by splitting that up, uh, from the booster station, um, is it the cost basically the same, is it?
Um, no, it was, you know, that's just split the cost, but, um, the difference was it was a different type of project, it was more of a maintenance, we could classify it as a maintenance project where the new station, we needed to do a design development report, we needed PD approval. Um, so we figured we could move forward on this one quicker, while we wouldn't deal with the other one, and they're both needed to, uh, do what we wanted regarding the ability to take the Great Sky tank down for maintenance. Uh, people Laurel Canyon with water.
So this, this, this pump station is what we, I mean, is what we discussed in the original scope, it's just?
It's just split.
Just split, okay. So, so the overall cost will remain the same, we're just?
Well, the, I I can tell you that the bids came in higher than than the engineer's estimate. But that seems to be happening across the board. But the, in relations to the other, the other contractors, there are, I think, um, they're all pretty much within, you know, a certain percentage, you know, four or five percent of each other, with exception of a couple of them.
Okay. Ms. McGrew, you have a question?
Thank you. Mr. Hattavian, will this phase of the, uh, project take care of the water pressure issues at, uh, the preserve at Canyon Ridge?
No, not yet.
When will those issues be taken care of?
Well, there, there, there are two things that have to happen. The first one is to build the the new booster station in Laurel Canyon. And second phase would be that the second phase of, you know, Preserve Canyon Ridge would have to get built, because we're going to be connecting into their infrastructure on that, on that side.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Hattavian? Okay, so we'll be looking at that, uh, you did not, that was not for action tonight, just for discussion, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, item D, discussion on accepting the P Ridge section of City of Waleska's water system, Mr. Peppers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, we received a request, uh, right around December from the City of Waleska, asking us to look into considering, uh, taking over a water service area that they have that is in the P Ridge Amos Road section of 140. For, for your information, we service water north of there to Laurel Canyon and Great Sky, and we have water and utility service south, east, and west of there. And so ultimately, this is, this is kind of a, an, an island within our existing service area. We supply water to Waleska, uh, north of Great Sky, that they use to backfeed this particular area. So if we were to take it over, it's not going to impact our water system anymore, because we're already supplying the water to that area through Waleska, through a wholesale agreement. There are little over a hundred customers in that particular area. Uh, the big, the big thing that would impact us is that they use a different meter than we do, so we would have to go in and replace the meters to match our metering system. Most of the lines in that area are smaller PVC lines, but we have those in other parts of the city. There is a section of asbestos line that's in that area. Uh, we, we have some asbestos line in our own system, and it's not typically an issue unless you go to remove it or have have major, um, infrastructure upgrades. They would prefer us to take this area just because I think, I think they have a fear that as development occurs in that area, it's going to want to try to come into the city anyways, from a service standpoint. Uh, one of the things that, uh, that, you know, that that we should consider is that our sewer service area is actually larger than our water service area in this particular part of town. And so we provide sewer service on up to Lower Burris Road. The acreage, for instance, that the school board just purchased on 140 in Lower Burris for a future school site, we provide the sewer that's in Alaska's water service area. So there's going to be back and forth in this area anyways. Uh, we will, like I said, we will have some cost if we take, if we decide to take this over, because we will have to replace meters. And at some point, there'll be upgrades of lines, but we're already providing water service to those customers from a wholesale standpoint. There is not sewer in that particular area, and so, uh, as growth is is looking to occur, those people would want to tie onto our sewer anyways. So that would give us the opportunity to provide both water and sewer to those customers, uh, as development might occur in the future. And I've, I've explained to the mayor and council, uh, to the mayor of Waleska and the city manager up there that I would bring this information to council. They're pretty aggressive that they would like this, uh, to occur. They, they are not it sounded to me like they would not be willing to sign off on service delivery strategy unless we took this area over.
So I think there were, Mr. Peppers, did I read there's 103 customers in that area? Would that be 103 meters that would have to be replaced?
Yes.
What, what's the average cost, uh, per meter?
Mr. Hattavian?
I think it's, you know, ballparking is probably around $200.
Installed or?
Well, you, if you, if you P would install it, so the cost is already incurred.
Okay. And this area is that area is actually county, correct, is that?
It is, it's an, it's an unincorporated island. Uh, and, and a, and a large reason for that is most of it has no sewer. Uh, most people who would want to develop in that area would try to annex into the city and maybe get some some, uh, incentives on sewer to come in and and close in that unincorporated area at some point in the future.
I wonder if we do consider this, if there's a more holistic solution that we try to look at that island, you know, uh, bringing it into the city and water service at the same time, I don't know if that's a possibility, but.
Really, what brought this to the forefront, uh, if you recall, um, the new apartment project, Legends at Laurel Canyon, that's going in there at 140, the original maps that were included in service delivery were not along parcel lines. And so there was a concern from Waleska, because the Legends at Laurel Canyon is tied into our water system at Laurel Canyon. There was a concern that they thought that that developers were trying to sneak into the city of Canton as opposed to being Waleska water customers. We, we go back to the fact that, you know, the maps that they had at the time are not parcel-specific. And so where you have a parcel that's split between two service areas, we think that the customer can decide which service area is the most efficient for their service, and for Legends at Laurel Canyon, it was more efficient to tie into the city services next door.
Ms. Wilson?
There's not a, uh, is, is there an option for us to swap the mountain preserve area for the P Ridge area? And have Waleska take over Mountain, Mountain Preserve if we take over P Ridge?
So it's, it's, it's kind of an interesting phenomenon, because they buy water from us to supply that area in P Ridge, we buy water from them to supply the front section of, uh, Canyon Ridge Preserve at Canyon?
I'm talking about Canyon Ridge, not Mountain Preserve.
Uh, and so, you know, it, it's kind of a, you know, that, that's something that we could consider, in stating to them is, you know, if we're going to try to clear these things up, then let's fully clear them up, and those neighborhoods that you're truly providing water to, even though they might be in the city limits, should really be your water customers. But again, we have, we have other neighborhoods in the city of Canton that are transferred water from either Water, Water Authority or or City of Waleska. So it's not a, it's not an uncommon situation. That one is uncommon from the standpoint that we do have water pressure issues in front of Canyon Ridge, and there's not a whole lot we can do on our side to fix that water pressure issue, because it's not connected directly into our system.
Do you think that we consider a, a swap out?
We can always ask. And, and in speaking about that, as Mr. Hattavian was, uh, answering Ms. McGrew's question earlier, you know, when we get the booster pump station in at Laurel Canyon and get, uh, future development at Preserve at Canyon Ridge, it could be that we could provide an, an access point from our water service area back to Waleska on that side of 140 to get into the back part of that neighborhood, they could continue provide water service in there, we could just have a meter to flow into their system, so it kind of creates a loop. So that if they ever have an issue, they've got another point of contact with the City of Canton Water Service.
It's an interesting conundrum, I mean, that Waleska's is providing water to them to begin with. And it's that area is in, obviously in the city limits, but it's it's in unincorporated Cherokee County. But if we took it over, we're going to have to invest, you know, in the meters and possibly the lines and maintenance of the lines, so it's going to cost us money. But they're, you know, officially county residents, and so it's, it's just it's complicated, and so I, it seems like we need some motivation to, to do that. I guess, a- again, unless there's some sort of holistic solution to that, that we you know, we do it and we welcome those citizens into the city, you know, across the board, but just thinking out loud, Ms. Ms. McGrew, did you have a question, comment?
Thank you. I'm not sure if I heard Mr. Peppers correctly, a little static on the line. Something about Waleska is insisting that we accept this deal, or they won't sign off on the, uh, service delivery strategy, did you say that?
Basically, that's the letter that they sent to us.
Could you elaborate, please, and they're asking us to spend money?
They, they believe that well, a cou- a couple of things, I go back to the initial water service maps that are in the old service delivery agreement. They're not parcel-specific, and so their concern is they don't want to, they don't want to sign off on a service map that may not be correct based upon who's actually providing service to those parcels. And they also feel like it doesn't match with service delivery for us both to have water lines in the same area, because it's not efficient service to the end customer. I, I can't speak for why we have lines that go up 140 in that direction, I can't, I don't know enough of the history to be able to do that. My guess is at some point, we have the capacity and 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 we were there at Laurel Canyon. Most of that area at Laurel Canyon, Great Sky, has been in the city limits for a long time, number of years.
I'm not taking very kindly to, uh, being held hostage.
Ms. Schmidt?
Um, well, I guess I needed Mr. Peppers to clarify the water service maps. Why wouldn't we just correct the map? Instead of paying money to change the pipes or whatever, you know what I mean, like, I don't understand.
Well, I think, I think their position is that ultimately, service delivery suggests that the most efficient provision of services be provided. And if we've got water that's working in a circuitous route to get to a customer, and we've got lines right in front of that customer, why wouldn't we provide the service? I don't necessarily have a problem with that argument. I don't think it should hold up service delivery for us to make that decision. I think that, to me, what would make the most sense is to agree to the maps as they are and agree to work with each other on a way to fix those service inefficiencies.
So where we're currently, um, selling water wholesale to those 103 customers or to Waleska to service those 103 customers, correct?
That's correct.
So, the wholesale rate, what would be the difference between the wholesale rate and then our rate to those 103 customers? I mean, it looks like we did 103 meters at 200 bucks a pop, I mean, it's around $22,000 if I'm doing that correctly, so it's not a huge cost, but would we make that up in water?
We we would, uh, you know, we would charge those customers the same customer rate that we charge everyone else in the city. And so, you know, we would have a little bit of gain in in monthly bills, and so uh, it'd take a little bit of time to to recoup that. You know, but like I said, it's not going to cost us any more from a water, uh, capacity standpoint, because we're already providing the capacity. It would just cost us a little bit more on the front end to replace those meters, swap the meters out. And then we would just have to be in control of those lines for future capital upgrade projects, depending on what happened in that area. Now, having said that, if the area was going to redevelop over time, then the developer would be paying the cost of putting in new lines and 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 upgrading to whatever we might require as part of those projects.
Right. I mean, if, if and when that happens, but right now, we're taking a huge risk on, you know, if we did, you know, take this over, we're taking over all those really old lines and, you know, all the potential problems that come with it, so. Also, what, is there a difference in the rate that Waleska is charging those customers and what we would charge?
I don't have the Waleska rate in front of me, but I can try to find it out for you.
It might be good to know, because if our rates are more, they may not be happy about that, it may be good to hear from them also, so. But Ms. McGrew? You're Ms. McGrew, I think you're muted.
I believe that you were correct. Uh, thank you. Uh, if we're going to put all the money into new meters and lines, we would have to raise water rates for that to be paid for. I don't think the residents would take kindly to that. Also, have we heard from the residents? What do they think of this?
We haven't heard from the residents, because they're not our residents, and they're not our water customers. I mean, that would be up to Waleska to make them aware of it.
Let's say they're the City of Waleska water customers. I guess they're in
And they're
and then, but they're unincorporated county residents, so it's could it get, get more complicated, so?
Well, I would love to have them as city residents. Uh, they would have to sign on for that, they would have to agree to it. But this sounds like it's very complicated, and I'm curious what staff has to say about it.
Hattavian?
From a purely a hydraulic and engineering side, excuse me, it, it worked, worked, worked out better for us. But one of the things that you could do is as part of the negotiations, have Waleska pay for the cost for the meters.
Good point. And we would be inheriting old lines that contain asbestos. Could we get some money upfront to take care of that?
The, the asbestos lines are only on 140. And right now, we probably wouldn't do anything with them unless we had an issue with them.
Okay.
Problem comes is, is working with them, cutting them and getting the asbestos in the air. You got to do some certain things when you work on them. And there are certain requirements on disposal. But it stands now, we probably wouldn't do anything with them unless there was an issue. The, as the, the normal lines in the streets, we probably, we've got lines like that throughout the city anyway.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Hattabian, you said the asbestos lines are on 140. Would DOT be involved in those if, I mean, I know we're talking about some projects on 140 potentially in the future, would they? Would we need to bring them into this conversation anytime?
If it goes like it did on State Route 20, where we have asbestos lines, they are making the contractors dispose of them during this widening project. I would say that would probably happen here as well. The difference right now is the 140 work is being paid for 100% by GDOT and the state. I'm not sure how the funding would be on 140 project. I think it, you know, it would probably be maybe 80% state and 20% match from the city.
What about the, they're doing some improvements there, the new apartments there, correct? Are they?
Yes, they've actually, they've actually extended ductal iron pipes from, I think it's Laurel Canyon Parkway about down to P Ridge. So the asbestos line goes about from, from the intersection at P Ridge to the new fire station.
Has any of that been replaced?
No.
Okay. Mr. Sis, did you have a question?
I was just wondering what circuit, with this or whatever you said, Mr. Peppers is. I tried to Google it and all I got was circus ideas.
Meaning that we provide water and then it goes to them and then it comes back to us and it just moves around in one, one unique circle, circuitous. I believe Mr. Ingram's got some information on the Waleska water rates.
Counsel, looking at Waleska's website, their rates are on the, around seven to nine dollars per thousand. Ours generally runs between six to eight dollars per thousand. So we're just slightly lower. And I say around because obviously it depends on what the consumption amounts.
Okay. Okay. So it wouldn't be an issue of us charging them more than being irate over that. So.
If, if it's okay with counsel, I think I've heard enough comments and questions from each one of you to send a list of questions back to the City of Waleska, basically saying, we need more information on this. We're trying to understand this from, from our standpoint, you know. One, you know, have you talked to any of the customers in that area? Are they aware of what might be going on? Two, are you saying specifically that you will not sign off on service delivery unless we take this area? Three, would you be interested in some type of exchange of service areas? Four, what might you do to help us fiscally compensate for some of the improvements we're going to have to make for meters or perhaps future work within that corridor area? And five, if we can come to some agreement, even if it's outside of service delivery, would that be okay so that we can continue on service delivery? And also work in good faith together to clear up this circuitous issue?
Sounds, sounds good.
Okay.
Great. Thank you for that great summary. Okay. You have other questions on that? Along to item E, discussion to reauthorize cooperation with Cherokee County Community Development Block Grant Program. Mr. Peppers?
I think I had a little bit of conversation with several of you about community development block grant and how that actually works. With Cherokee County having a population over 150,000, we are an entitlement community, which means that Cherokee County gets a direct allocation of HUD's CDBG funding based upon federal appropriations. If we were in a community smaller, we would be a non-entitlement community, which means any projects we would like to do, we would apply through the State's Department of Community Affairs in a pooled grant program. What the Board of Commissioners has asked is that we, whether or not we're willing to sign on to be a partner as it relates to CDBG funding for the next round of funding cycles, which would begin in October of this year and run through the end of the fiscal year 2022, which is September of 2023. Basically, that allows them to count us as a partner so that when HUD funding is available, we can make application directly to the county for a percentage of that fund for city projects as long as those projects fall within their scope and that they presented to HUD. If we chose not to participate, we would be in the pool process with non-entitlement communities. And we could reach out to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs for grant allocations. We would have problems with that because of the overall median household income, likely the population of the city, city's total financial budget. It puts us on a playing field with much smaller communities. So in essence, even though we might get one really great project through the state every few years, we're more likely to get smaller but more consistent allocations through the county without having to compete with other communities to get some funding, if that makes sense.
And this basically is the way we've been doing this for a number of years, correct?
I believe 2008 was the first year that we were considered an entitlement community. And so we've been doing it this, you know, for the last 12 years.
Okay. So this is an annual renewal or approval?
Yes. So this is done every three years.
Okay.
Three-year program.
And they, they, county had sent it for my signature. And actually, when I read it, read through it, it, it did, it didn't say required, but it, it, it said something about council approval. So I did want to bring it to this meeting and, and have an official note on it, that that was the way we wanted to go. So.
And just, and just for, for a follow-up, we have had several CDBG projects within the city of Canton, some by us, some by the county. For instance, CDBG funds were used for the sidewalk on Brown Industrial Parkway. That was our most recent project. We used some a few years ago on the Canton Creek Bridge, Marietta Road. It's been used to help fund projects at Mass Ministries, the Boys and Girls Club. Children's Haven has received some CDBG funding in the past. So we get the benefit of some of the county projects, even if they're not administered through the city for nonprofits and other projects that occur within the city limits.
I think the History Museum also received some money through CDBG, correct?
I think they're scheduled to give an allocation as well, sir.
Mr. Tolan?
Uh, Mr. Peppers, what, what sort of dollar amount are we talking typically every, I think you said every three years for this?
It varies. It's based upon an allocation of federal CDBG appropriations. And so depending on what happens at the federal level, it trickles down by population through all of these entitlement and non-entitlement programs. So, you know, our particular projects that we get at the city level are generally between 100,000 and maybe 300,000 on the top end. And where you don't get those every single year, it's usually every couple of years. If we were doing the statewide pool process, most of those grants are capped at either 250 or 500,000 dollars, depending on the project. And it's competitive based upon region of the state and most specifically used for infrastructure for public health like sewer. We have sewer. So it would be difficult for us to go up against some of those statewide projects.
So as a follow-up, can, can we as a city give consideration if and when those, the, the next allocation comes to dedicate those funds to affordable housing, for instance?
So generally speaking, what we will do is we will get a request from the county to provide to them a list of potential City of Canton CDBG projects. They get those lists from not only us, but they get those lists from other cities that participate. Woodstock, Holly Springs, Ball Ground. They look at the list, they figure out how much money they think they're going to get in their federal allocation of that year. Plus they look at the nonprofit groups that they work with on an annual basis. Some of it goes to their senior services program. And they determine which projects out of those they think they can afford to lock together for that allocation. Then they have to get HUD to sign off on that project's list. Once that project's list has been signed off on, we would get pre-approval or no approval on one of our projects. So we might submit three or four projects. They might come back and say, no, we can only fund one. And this is the one out of those three or four we can fund based upon the dollars that are out there. I will tell you on certain projects, it's more expensive for us to go this route because if you're using federal funds, you have to meet certain federal guidelines as it relates to wage rates for contractors. You have to meet certain guidelines as it relates to vendors being minority owned or, or having low to moderate income employees. And so on smaller projects, it's not very efficient for us to use this funding because we can't get a lot of vendors to, to, to contract, to bid on them. What we would do specifically, if housing was going to be one of the options, we would probably request a joint application between the city and Housing Authority on that. It might make it a more project. I don't know. I haven't seen the, I think the county's waiting on seeing which cities are going to participate before they put together their kind of three-year plan for, for CDBG. They need to know how many, how many partners they're going to have at the table.
So once we approve this in the other cities, then we, we do sit down and discuss potential projects for them to request funding?
Each, each CDBG allocation is going to be a little bit different because the federal government's going to put priority on certain types of projects. And then of course, if you go back to census tracts, for instance, they're gonna, they're gonna provide some push for projects to be done in low to moderate income census tracts versus others based on eligibility. That's one thing that does help the City of Canton is that we have a couple of census tracts that meet those criteria. And so that helps us with accounting on projects. But ultimately, we would sit down with the county and say, you know, how much funding are you looking at for this three-year cycle and what types of projects are going to be the priority? And then we'll turn around and bring projects to them that we think we could get done within that period of time.
And we actually apply to the county for those projects.
We send this to the county. They take all of those and put them together into a comprehensive plan, submit that HUD for HUD's approval.
And just, I guess for further clarification, Mr. Peppers, so HUD ultimately evaluates the requests and, and makes the, ultimately makes the decisions where those funds are allocated?
HUD, HUD ultimately blesses the projects, yes.
Okay. So it just, logically, it seems to me it would make sense since HUD has traditionally been a housing entity that, that affordable housing might be viewed positively or, or a request.
Well, it depends. HUD, HUD generally likes to, likes to save community development block grant funds for projects that cannot be funded through another HUD funding source, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Ms. Smith, did you have a question?
Is this, Mr. Peppers, what we talked about the other day that Rome is using for economic development?
So some communities will earmark funds for things like workforce development or economic development projects that benefit low to moderate income individuals. Some use it for transit. So I think the CATS service in Cherokee County gets some CDBG funding. Senior services in Cherokee County have traditionally gotten, gotten CDBG funding for things like Mills on Wheels, Mills for Seniors and, and senior home care projects. And then if you think about the other nonprofits that they have worked with in the past, most of those provide services to low to moderate income individuals. So that, that is always going to be the basis for that improvement. When we did the sidewalks on Brown Industrial, the idea was that we could connect, for instance, the Canton Mill Lofts and that older section of Mill Village that's off of Riverstone to our industrial park by trail and sidewalk so that individuals who don't have cars would have a safe route to work. And that was one of the reasons why it got picked up as a project.
Good to know.
Any other discussion? I would. Mr. Peppers, remind me, we need to devote on this tonight, did we? I think.
Let's see. They need to, they need the original by June 6th. So if we need to vote on this later in the month, that's okay. We don't have to have action tonight.
Okay. Great. Thank you for reminding me of that. So we will move on to item F, discussion of council approval to waive certain fees and provide payment plans due to COVID-19. Mr. Peppers?
Yes, sir. So the city, as part of the emergency declaration that council did back in March, has made some administrative approvals and extensions that we're asking council to basically ratify tonight. Or, or even later this month, you don't have to take action on it tonight if you don't want to. It'd be better if you did because we're already doing some of these things. But for instance, we've been waiving penalties and late fees as it relates to business licenses that have come in after March 31st. A number of businesses, those licenses were due, renewals were due on March 31st. A number of businesses were either closed or their accounting offices were closed or their franchises and a certain business group was closed. And so what we've been doing is as those businesses have been reaching out to us with concerns, we've been approving an extension on the payment of those fees through the end of May and waiving all late fees associated with that. We've also been hauling businesses that we have not received a renewal from, asking them if they need an extension or if they have any question about, about filing for an extension. Additionally, we have been waiving late fees and penalties as it relates to water and utility accounts. And so if council. And so if council were to approve the memorandum that basically we put before you, it would give our staff the ability to create some payment plans for individuals so that they could catch up on their accounts and have them paid off without penalty by the end of this fiscal year. Our goal is to try to take any deficiencies that we might have on accounts and work them into a plan so that it doesn't last into the next fiscal year, but we can handle it all before October 1st. And then finally, it gives us the ability on some business excise taxes to give them flexibility and payment plans. As you can imagine, examples of those excise taxes would include alcohol excise taxes from restaurants. Well, if restaurants weren't open, they might not be able to to get all of the records in place. So this gives us a chance to give them an extension on that. Hotel tax hotel taxes, for instance, if hotels weren't operating and they're corporate, there may be a delay on that. So this gives us an opportunity to put in place a payment plan, but also to defer on late fees and penalties so that we can catch all of those up by the end of the fiscal year.
I certainly think all those make sense and you're doing everything we can to help our citizens and businesses, you know, deal with the impact of this situation is great. And if we can do that through the fiscal years, it's not impacting or putting off our, you know, problems into the next budget period. So I think the the more flexibility we can allow through that, I think it's great. So I mean, I think all of these things are great. And I know we're we're talking about some some other programs to help businesses and all. But but I think this is certainly a great interim solution. Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Peppers, I am all in favor of taking care of our businesses and not having penalties and fees for late payments or giving them extensions and doing whatever we need for them to be able to have success during this time. Do you want to motion tonight?
If council's willing to make a motion, that that gives us more time to start working on payment plans.
And does somebody want to give me an idea of what this motion should say? You want to just approve the memo that you gave us?
I'm I'm happy.
I can I can read it, Ms. McGrew, if you'd like. I've got it right. Got it right in front of me here.
Oh, you want to make the motion then? Go ahead.
I don't, but I'm I'm telling you, I have the words. It's 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 a motion to approval to waive certain fees and provide payment plans due to COVID-19. So say that now, Ms. McGrew.
Real fast. I'd like to make the motion to waive fees and penalties to businesses through this COVID-19 process.
We we would also ask that you include individual customers and that allows us to create payment plans and waive the fees for those as well if it's a citizen instance on a utility account.
And I want to include citizens as well, individuals.
Could we, Mr. Dyer, should we add, based on the city manager's memorandum from April 28, 2020? Just so we're not, not that any our city employees would would do anything outside that, but just to make that official that we were talking about these items.
I I think tying into that memorandum would be a good idea, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Should it have an expiration date?
October 1st.
October 1st.
Actually, actually, we would ask September 30th so that we don't bleed into the next fiscal year.
There you go.
Thank you.
I second the motion.
Okay. So is that motion clear enough, Mr. Dyer?
We'll clean it up in the minutes.
Thank you.
This is Joe Ellen. I second the motion.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? So I'll do a roll call. All in favor of the motion, Ms. McGrew?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Tolan?
Yes.
Mr. Estes?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
All members voted for the motion. Great, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Peppers, for outlining that and working with our citizens and businesses and all the work you and the rest of the staff are doing to to take care of them during this time. We appreciate it. I know they did well, so. Item G, discussion and action on a temporary maintenance easement with GDOT for Etowah River Trail area. Mr. Peppers?
All right. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and council. We would ask for action on this tonight. Georgia Department of Transportation has been working on the on ramp to 575 southbound from exit 20. They're at River Riverstone. They have been doing debris removal underneath the 575 bridges and are having to do some work for erosion control as it relates to one of the bridge pilings in that area. And we, our engineering staff sat down with GDOT to review what we were planning to do as it related to our trail expansion in that area. And GDOT has agreed to do the work on our behalf while they're doing the work in that area already. And so this gives us the ability to get them moving forward on that project. And so they have sent over to us a copy of their temporary maintenance easement. And so we would just request that council take action on this tonight so that we will be ready if and when we can work together on getting that area prepared for the trail and also working for GDOT as it relates to 575.
Great. I think the timing worked out well for us on this one, so. Any questions or comments on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the temporary maintenance easement for GDOT.
So Ms. Ms. Brooks made, Ms. Smith made the motion. I have a second, sorry.
I will second it.
Mr. Tolan made the second, so again, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. McGrew?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Tolan?
Yes.
Mr. Estes?
You're muted.
Yes.
I missed Smith.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, yes.
All members voted for the motions. Okay. Thank you for your patience. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, sir. A couple of items I wanted to make you aware of. I had sent a memorandum out to you, but I wanted to verbalize this for the public. We're working on our plans for reopening facilities and events following the pandemic. Right now, as we have it scheduled, we will be reinstituting staff fully back into our facility starting next Monday. We have been operating through staggered shifts and some remote teleworking options for employees. But beginning Monday, almost all of our employees will be back in house, working their traditional work schedule. We will leave our city facilities closed to the public through June 1st. Part of the reason for that is that we are undertaking a couple of building improvement projects in customer service areas just to provide some physical barriers between the customer and our employees. And we expect to have those done before the end of the month. Municipal court has decided to move forward with their court session on May 20th. And as part of that, they're working through some updated operations for court. They'll be limiting the number of people who are in court at any particular time. They will be collecting phone numbers for individuals who are attending court that day so that they can sit in their vehicles and wait to be called in as it gets closer to their court time. Of course, they'll be doing resets for anybody who's ill or anybody who who has a health concern or might be in that high risk category. We have obtained some additional PPE here at the city, not N95s, but ear loop masks and things like that for our employees and have provided some of those to municipal court as well. We did receive a shipment earlier this week of thermal thermometers, scanning thermometers. So we will have those at our disposal as well. A couple of the specific changes that we're making on the side of public events, probably the the one that's the that that will be the most visible is the movement of the farmer's market to Brown Park to start on the first Saturday in June. It will be limited to growers and producers to limit the number of vendors that are there. And we're working on our plans to space those vendors out. It gives us a little bit more flexibility than Cannon Park that's downtown. One of the questions that we are being asked is about whether or not the city is going to support the carrying out of city activities and events in the month of June. And so I wanted to get a little bit of feedback from the council on that. Right now, we have what we would consider to be two, two of our major events scheduled in June. One is the first Friday, which would be on June the 6th. And the second would be our traditional summer concert, which would be on the 20th of June down at Etowah River Park. Those those two particular groups that put on those events have asked for some feedback on those. They don't want to do anything necessarily that that isn't supported by the council. But they also understand that in planning their events, they need as much time as possible to be able to carry those out. So, you know, whether it's moving vendors around, spacing things, limiting number of participants, changing out the arrangement for those events, they just really need a little bit of feedback on that. So I I've I've told them that I would kind of speak to council tonight and get a little bit of your thoughts on those so that we have a better idea of what what people want to do with those particular events. So far, as it relates to summer concerts, we've been able to move the May concert to become the opening act for the October concert. So we're trying to work with entertainment, for instance, to move those out further where we can. We did move forward with paying the deposit through tourism on the 4th of July fireworks, though I think fireworks are going to be the limit of that activity. I don't think they're going to have a band or a DJ. I think it's simply going to be the availability of people to park in their cars, go out, watch the fireworks and then go home. There's no additional event associated with that, so.
Mr. Peppers, the state health emergency runs through June 12th or 13th, is that correct?
So we we have a hybrid there. The the emergency portions of the emergency run through June 12th and portions of them end on May 13th. The shelter in place for high risk category individuals runs through June 12th. Almost every other exception in the state order ends on May 13th. So for instance, we've received a lot of questions from individuals about city playgrounds and when our playgrounds might reopen at the parks. And in fact, had a conversation yesterday with the county parks agency. All of us are trying to to listen to what each other's planning to do so that we can open things up together as opposed to making it more confusing for the average citizen. As it relates to parks, what we have said so far, even though the state emergency ends on May 13th, we would not open our parks up before May 18th in that we would evaluate that decision next week before making a final declaration, one way or the other. But most of the provisions of the state orders end on the 13th of May.
I was in a call this this week with Dr. Timmy, the Chief Medical Officer of the State of Georgia, who who said that, you know, all the, you know, the, I think the president's seven gateways for meeting reopening said, you know, we are on track, the state meeting six out of seven of those, the one we were meeting of 14 days consecutive, you know, drops in cases. And said the state is is monitoring, you know, what impact reopening may may have. And she she's said that we really would not know that until probably two to three weeks from now. And so she kind of cautioned everyone to just be on the lookout for, you know, what the numbers may do. Hopefully, they're going to continue to to drop and we will see those 14 days. However, if the are at risk citizens, meaning anyone over 65, are are recommended to shelter in place through June 12th or 13th. I I would love to see a a June 1st Friday, but it seemed like we'd be saying, okay, first Friday, except anyone over 65 shouldn't come. So I I have a little bit of conflict with that. I don't think we would want to encourage them to come because we should be encouraging them to shelter in place. And then Dr. Timmy also strongly encouraged and recommended anyone out in public to to wear a face mask. Of course, that cannot be mandated and we would not do that, but she highly recommended it. So I think those are some issues we would need to consider. Again, I would I would love to see see a first Friday in June. But if that shelter in place goes through June 12th or 13th for 65 and older or anyone with, you know, issues such as asthma or things like that, it it concerns me. But again, I know we would probably, if we did did it, we probably would would want a smaller, smaller crowd, a smaller group. Though maybe, maybe that would work. No, Ms. Smith, did you have comments?
I did. Well, first, I don't, I'm not sure how we would, at a first Friday, how you would control. I mean, it's not a ticketed event. So how could you control crowd size? But my first question was, we're at the point where we can say that groups gatherings of even 50 or more are allowed yet? Is that correct?
Yeah, what what are the state guidelines on that, Mr. Peppers? I was meant to ask that.
So, you know, the state guidelines have basically been as it relates to businesses so far. And those guidelines have been based on spacing, based upon the square footage of the business. So it's a little bit hard to determine when you have an outdoor event. You know, we're just at the point where if if council doesn't feel comfortable with having the events, it's easier for me to tell those particular staff members, let's postpone those and see if we can move them out. But, you know, we do get a number of citizens that are asking us when these events are going to go on. And so I just really need, you know, if if it's something that council doesn't feel like we can do it the first of June, but maybe July is a better time for us to do that, I think that's fine. We'll be able to work it out. We should be able to work with all of those entertainers, whether it's moving them back later this year or try to get them rescheduled for next fiscal year, next calendar year, we'll do whatever we need to. I think on the first Fridays, for instance, one of the options that were being looked at was, you know, if if these get moved out into the fall, maybe we do two a month as opposed to just one. So we don't lose any of that economic impact on downtown.
So I would just say, based on that information and my questions, I I don't think we could pull off safely a first Friday in June. I might be more comfortable with the Etowah River concert on June 20th and then starting first Friday in July. But I don't think we could do, that's just me, I don't think, I don't see how we could do a first Friday in June.
Mr. Estes?
I guess, you know, the precedence already being set, though, with the farmer's markets, you know, being picking up on the 6th and get different volumes of people, certainly. But, you know, my my consideration is, you know, people But you know, my, my consideration is, you know, people who don't feel comfortable won't attend. You know, people will be smart and, and you know, use their best judgment to, to, to keep distance. And another consideration could be putting in Brown Park, maybe. I don't, I don't know if that allows for people to spread out more. Although the downtown area is kind of the, the business hub. And, and that's, you know, a good opportunity and purpose for, I guess, thinking out loud. It, it probably, we're able to spread more people out in downtown. But those are my two thoughts.
Just to time in a second on the farmer's market, one of the reasons why we were, we were pushing the start of the farmer's market back in June. Is because it does provide food supply for certain individuals. And it does provide an opportunity for local growers to sell. And we know that our farming community just across the state has kind of been hit. You know, we were, we were very specific, at least I was very specific in what I ask of the farmer's market. Which is that, you know, we don't want craft vendors. Our goal isn't for people to come there and, and socialize. Our goal isn't for people to come there and have, you know, a, a group gathering at the farmer's market. Our goal is for individuals to come in, pick up their grown, their, their groceries or their locally grown produce and go home. You know, so it's a little bit different. The initial discussions that I've had with Valinda on first Friday are that, you know, regardless of when we have one. I think we're going to have to do a more direct job in spacing out food vendors. I think we're going to have to look into other options as it relates to sanitation. We're going to have to look into some, some guidelines as it relates to setting up chairs in the park to be able to watch. You know, if, if you've ever been to a first Friday, you know that people do sit very closely together. We may have to change the orientation of the stage or the location of the stage so that it's more visible to a larger area. As opposed to, you know, just that side profile of Cannon Park. You know, if, we have a little bit more flexibility down at Etowah River Park as it relates to a summer concert. It's just a bigger venue in general, and so people do tend to spread out. They did last year even for the traditional concerts. And, and you do tend to get more groupings of people that live in the same home as opposed to large clusters of individuals. And of course, we can spread out food and, and, and things like that. You know, frankly, you know, even back to the playground argument in parks, you know. The question is, are we going to have inflatables for kids to play on or do we limit those high touch areas, you know? And what do we do from a sanitation standpoint? But like I said, you know, we expect if we have these events, that there will be a decrease in crowds. Just from the standpoint that our normal attendees that come from certain areas. May not come because they have a immunocompromised system or because they're higher at risk. Or because simply they just don't want to be around people since they've enjoyed being at home for a couple of months. You know, so we know there's going to be some impacts with that. At the same time, you know, we do have, you know, a number of our, of our residents. Who are, who are asking the question, when these events are going to take place? Because, you know, some people still want an opportunity for that community gathering. And they want an opportunity to get out of their house and they're probably not going on vacation this year, but they still need something to entertain them. And for those, you know, maybe we can come up with some, some unique ways to, to live stream the band that's playing at a concert. Or a first Friday so that our residents who can't come out can still enjoy it from home. I don't know. Those are all things that we would have to work through.
Yeah, I, I, I understand all those things. I've been, I've, you know, very excited to see the farmer's market. Coming back and, and, and it's, you know, being, you know, reimagined for this new normal. And I know, you know, I know first Fridays won't go back to what they were before, you know, unfortunately. Maybe they will by next year, so. But I think unlike the farmer's market where we had the solutions, you know, you guys kind of came, this is what we're doing. You know, so I think everyone feels comfortable with that. I don't know if, if, if Main Street kind of said, okay, here, here's how we would do a first Friday. I would feel more comfortable if I knew more of the specifics around that. And I, I think also for moving bands around and all, I mean, there's, there's obviously not enough Fridays. To fit all those first Fridays in. So is it possible that, you know, in, in June, we could look at scheduling that for like June fifteenth? Or something around the middle of the month after that, you know, June thirteenth. Shelter in place order has, has expired. So we're not, you know, we're not tempting anyone with that. It'd give more time for planning. You know. I also want to support our downtown businesses, but you know, the, the fact is, they can't. They're limited on how many people they can have in, in their space as well. So it, I think there are a lot of issues to think through. So we're not frustrating people. I, I know people want to get out and, and, and socialize and I'm right there with them. But I think we just really need to kind of think about those things, you know. Thoroughly as, as possible. And then I think any people who want to make that choice and can, you know, are, are certainly welcome to do so. But we as a city just make, have to make sure that we're, we're doing everything properly that we can do. That we're being asked of by the state or even on the national level, that we're following best practices. And also taking care of our employees and staff and, and, and volunteers who are going to be putting on those events as well. So how, how are we going to make sure that they're, you're probably taken care of? But maybe, you know, I'd either say, you know, let's, let's look at July and doing them right. Or maybe push that first one back to mid-June and if we don't have to wait till July. I, I agree, Etowah Park is, we got plenty of room there. It seems like we, we can come up with a pretty easy solution there. First Friday, I think, requires a little bit more solutions. I, I know it can be done. But is that June fifteenth or should we just say July first? But I, I know we're going to have to, these bands and all, we're going to have to squeeze some in more than just Fridays. So I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on that, so. Mr. Tolan?
Yes, I actually, I love the idea of Bill of a, you know, maybe a second or a third Friday. I, I, I'm curious, kind of out loud here, you know, how much planning in terms of number? We, do we need to plan that two weeks in advance? Does it need to be three weeks in advance? And since we are in sort of unprecedented times. You know, if we can't, if we can't work out a band, if, if for whatever reason, the, the state and national public health officials. Give us guidance that, you know, it's, it's not the smartest thing to do, right? We just, we just push it to July one. But in the meantime, whatever guidance they give us, in my view, should, should guide our decision. And, and the timing of when we do it. But I, I love the idea of, of having some flexibility on which Friday it is in June, if we do something in June.
It looks like the, the, the first Friday after the shelter in place. Unless, again, unless something changed between now and then, I mean, that it could be extended for at-risk citizens. But would be June nineteenth.
So that would make our first, our first Friday event, June nineteenth and our Etowah River Concert, June twentieth.
We're a party in town, Brooke.
That's what I've heard.
Yeah, I think there'd probably be people that would be more comfortable going to Etowah Park where there's more space. So it would give people options and I, I think there's probably people that probably love to get out Friday and Saturday night. So I mean, I'm just saying that it wouldn't have to be the nineteenth, but I'm just saying that was a Friday after the. According to my, looking at the calendar real quick, but.
I'm, I'm comfortable with keeping Etowah River Park on the twentieth and just starting first Fridays in July. And then adding, adding Fridays as we can. If it seems like that's what the state's allowing, that's what's safe for everybody, then let's just throw in some more Fridays. So every Friday night's a party.
Well, we could also look at, at, you know, starting first Fridays in July. But then, you know, on, on, on the pickups, look at, you know, second Saturdays or third Saturday or something. And pick up on Saturday night in there also or something like that. But I think, you know. That, I guess, would still honor the intent, you know, the, the intent of first Fridays. And gives us more time to plan and do it right. And, and all, and since we would, if we're, if everyone's comfortable with Etowah River Park Concert. I mean, that, that could be a big, you know, a big event and with, with proper social distancing and could be fun. And we could, I assume we could invite all of our food vendors and people usually come to first Friday to, to Etowah Park as well. Mr. Peppers, could we do that?
We could. Now, now, one thing that, one thing that, just listening to conversation, one of the things that we could consider. Is the fact that, you know, so far as we've gotten close to the end of these dates for orders. We've seen something come out of the state or the governor's office as it relates to, you know, changed procedures or what have you. So right now, for instance, restaurants are all following an order that expires on May thirteenth. It could be that on May twelfth, there's another order that's issued through June twelfth that carries forward some of those restrictions. I can't imagine that it would come after May thirteenth. It's probably going to come before then. So perhaps what council could do is council could say that. We don't want to have any of these public or private events within thirty days of May thirteenth. Because that gives us a month to basically plan on any additional requirements the state may put out before the end of the existing order. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, because I mean, certainly the orders have not been too predictable or consistent. So I, and again, that based on Dr. Toomey's comments this week. I, I, I could, I wouldn't see those next week of those restaurant restrictions being lifted in their entirety. But I think it would make sense because, I mean, you really can't plan an event like that in, in less than thirty days. But that at least gives us deadline, it gives us dates to work around and they're not so arbitrary, so.
And, and just so you're also aware, what we've done is we have been refunding any private events that were scheduled through the month of May. In any of our parks or facilities and not allowing new applications to come in before May eighteenth. Because that gets us on the other end of that May thirteenth deadline. So if council would like, what we will do is we will say, we're not going to have any public or private events prior to June twelfth. That puts us in that thirty day window with May thirteenth and any other requirements that might come out. And that kind of puts us on in the same boat moving forward after that June twelfth.
That just events and not, that doesn't apply to meetings, correct?
That's correct. It's just for.
And that would, would not include in the farmer's market, June sixth, right, starts?
It would not include the farmer's market. And just so you know, if we were to socially distance at the Canton Theater, I believe our capacity is twenty-two. We don't have any shows, we don't have any shows scheduled at the Canton Theater through the month of May.
Very exclusive.
Well, that, that makes sense to me. Does that sound, does it make sense?
Yeah, what I will do is I will suggest that Adam Dodson continue working on the June summer concert, which is June twentieth. And that Valinda work on moving first Friday to another date. And perhaps starting the first Friday series in July. Unless they're able to work out something with a vendor for the end of June. Okay, perfect. The other thing that I wanted to note to council was just remember that we were, we were included again in the top twenty-five main streets in America. And that voting continues. And that I do know that our, our Main Street and our Downtown Development Authority are working on some unique programming. To create funding streams for downtown businesses through a gift card match program. That they hope to have launched here in the next few days before, before the weekend. So as soon as that information comes out, we'll be happy to share it on social media. I'm happy to answer any questions any of you might have.
The question is for Peppers? Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Appreciate it. I just have one thing.
Mayor, excuse me, I have a council introduced item, if I may.
Oh, yes, sure.
Bethany Watson, who's our engineer for transportation, sent me an update for the Georgia DOT projects that are ongoing. And I just wanted to announce them. There are three and I just wanted to know them so that the public would know about these projects. The first one is S, State Route twenty coming highway widening. The Highway twenty G dot project from I five seventy-five to Scott Road project was awarded in April twenty twenty. Utility relocations will start by the end of this month and construction is expected to continue for the next three years. This project will include widening to a six lane divided highway. I think we've all been looking forward to that though, not for three years, but. Number two, the State Route one forty Waleska Road Project. The city submitted two transportation improvement projects to ARC in October two thousand nineteen. These projects were originally scheduled to be elected by the pickup quarter twenty twenty. But due to COVID nineteen, these dates have been pushed back indefinitely and are to be determined. So we won't know anything about the State Route one forty Waleska Road Project for a while. And then the third one is five seventy-five at exit nineteen, the dedicated right lane to Northside Parkway, Quick Response Project. This will add a dedicated right turn lane at Parkway in order for emergency vehicles to reach the hospital quicker. The contractor is just waiting for a poll design approval from, from us, from downtown before they begin. And when they get started, it will only take them a few weeks to complete this project. So that's an update on DOT and some of the projects that I know you all are being asked about because I am.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Also, I had a council introduced item that I wanted to quickly share as well. In the next, for the next meeting. We, I will ask that Mr. Heptavian bring forward a, a review of the. The current work scope for our water treatment plant. We're currently going through. A, the expansion design work with Atkins. And, and as it may be, I've had the opportunity to sit in on, on some of these meetings. And with city staff and, and the city manager and Ms. Ingram as well. And what's happening is, is that if you recall, we, we're going to make a plant that was upgraded. To six million gallons per day. We've asked Atkins to go back and, and we've continued to create change requests. And, and, and come up with creative ideas and ways for us to try and fit the most optimal size. On that, on the site that we have. And so it'll be, for lack of better words, convertible to or able to be expanded to seven million gallons per day. And, and then we are also, and again, that, that increase would be through some modifications. So it wouldn't be available right away, but it would certainly save to be a better return on investment longer term. The other thing is that had Atkins go back and evaluate the. Pause, apologize, I probably won't use the, the right terms. But basically, where we have to take these solid waste. And before we were, we were transporting it, if you recall, waste management came back. And it went from twenty dollars to eighty dollars. And so given that uncertainty, the city staff had Atkins also go back and, and design. A dryer system that would effectively allow it to be disposed of. disposed of and, and in a more efficient manner and a lot cheaper. So I say all this because, uh, a lot of great work's been going on, but unfortunately, the, um, the change order, um, will require, um, more, more dollars. It'll be, um, I think the original budget for the chain, for the request with Atkins was $2 million. This would go to about $3 million, um, and, and such that would require, um, well, Mr. Haptavian or Mr. Peppers to come back and, and just give an overview to the city. It, based on all, again, all the work here is still within the original scope of the overall project. So I think it's all work that's being warranted, um, and it is good, good work. But it is, given the magnitude and the change in scope, certainly is something to, to bring to council for, uh, for more discussion at the next meeting and possible action. At the next meeting or we could take action, um, at the first meeting in June. So it's not a time sensitive issue at the moment, but wanted to bring that to, to council's attention. And did I miss anything, Mr. Haptavian or Mr. Peppers?
I, I don't know how much detail you want to get into. But what happened was the original plan, um, that was approved by E P D couldn't work, um, because of a changed influent flow conditions. And the conditions basically, it's all our tankage with our current technology. But in an effort to try to keep everything as much as we could, there was a lot of, um, alternatives and variations and different ideas to try to keep that in place. Um, when we couldn't, uh, make that work, um, we had to decide on changing of technologies. And we went with a different technology and had to evaluate different, uh, membrane vendors and, and everything like that. So there was a, a big domino effect from just our, our strength, the wastewater increasing between the time the design development report was done till the time that the project was awarded. What we will have though, in, in moving forward is we will have a state-of-the-art facility that, that will be, I'm actually really excited about it. I think it'll be really, really nice. But what we tried to do was to work within the current budget as best we could till we, you know, we knew we were going to have a change, but we wanted to get actual costs as opposed to estimates and where, that's where we are now. We will be, um, hopefully submitting these plans to E P D for approval in September and have it on the streets, uh, for advertising shortly thereafter.
Is this, Mr. Haptavian, does this put us, um, behind schedule for where we were planned on originally or?
Originally, yes. Uh, but yeah, we're, we're still looking to do, uh, like I say, have it begin construction hopefully. And then, uh, you know, it's, it's a 42-month construction period, but we believe we can get, kept six N G D of capacity within two years. While the project's still moving forward, but he, he had given us a verbal approval that they would grant us six once we got all our biological, um, processes in place and tested.
Okay. Well, we'll look forward to getting more details, uh, at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Any other council introduced items? As you can see, our, our council has been hard at work, uh, during this time, so no slacking off. And the committees are working hard. Uh, I know having conversations on a daily basis and staff is working hard. So, uh, business as usual on that front. So, uh, again, I only had one, uh, one item for tonight. As you recall, uh, in a couple of meetings, uh, the, uh, Canton Marketplace, uh, Community Improvement District Board, uh, I had served on that board before. I obviously rolled off in my new capacity, uh, so I replaced that board member, which has to be a council member with, Counselor Schmidt, uh, that was a mayoral appointment, um, I did. And then Dennis Burnett was served as our, uh, post seven citizen, uh, representative on that board, uh, who rolled off and I appointed Will Carland for that, uh, post. And, uh, the, uh, the attorney for the, uh, CID can, came back and said, there was a section in the House Bill 792 that actually requires a council vote recorded in the official minutes, uh, for these appointments, um, just based on the, um, the way the bill is written. So I just need to kind of go back. I know that we appointed those and, and everyone was okay with that, but I just need an official vote for you guys to, to be recorded in the minutes that we can pass along to them. So, um, uh, again, I want to make a formal nomination for the Canton Community Improvement District for Post Six, Councilmember Brooke Schmidt to serve in that post and then Post Seven, uh, Will Carland to serve in that post. So I'll make the nomination. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll have a second.
Okay. So have a second, uh, and we'll do a roll call vote, uh, on that. Uh, Ms. McGrew?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Tolan?
Yes.
Mr. Estes?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
All members voted for approved the nomination, so they'll be happy with that and get, uh, this reporter can get them official minutes once those are approved, uh, and, uh, those members will, I think they have a, a meeting, um, Caucus of Electors for that board, um, is on July 9th, uh, so we'll, we'll pass that along to them. So, um, that's, that's really all I had. Again, I just want to thank our council. I want to thank our staff for, uh, their great work during these trying times. I want to thank our citizens for, for their continued, um, patience, uh, as we began to kind of reopen the city. I want to thank our businesses and restaurants and, uh, all the great work that they're doing and, and, and adapting their, their policies and procedures, uh, according to the state's strict guidelines and our, our hair salon owners, uh, who are working hard and, and, and most, most of our businesses are going above and beyond what's even required by the state. So, uh, I encourage those who feel comfortable to support our businesses in any way possible. And I know all of our restaurants are still offering, uh, carryout and curbside pickup on most of them. And, and a lot of our restaurants are offering, uh, uh, groceries, uh, uh, selling their own provisions, uh, for you to cook at home. And, uh, last week I did extend the, uh, executive order allowing, uh, carryout, uh, beer and wine, uh, through June 12th. Was that, Mr. Peppers, is that correct? June 12th, all these dates, all these orders are, are very confusing, but, uh, uh, we, we did want to kind of, again, do anything we could help them with their businesses and, uh, we can discuss, uh, when it gets close to that date, if we want to extend that again. Or, uh, discuss if we want to even consider making that, that permanent. So, uh, again, we, we wish our businesses the best of luck and anything we can do to help them, we will do that. So, uh, again, so with that, um, we do have an executive session to, uh, discuss real estate litigation and personnel. So at this time I'll, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for real estate litigation and personnel.
I'll make a motion that we adjourned executive session.
Hey, my motion for Mr. Tolan, just a second.
This is Nick. I second.
I second Mr. Estes. So we'll do a roll call vote. Ms., Ms. McGrew?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Estes?
Yes.
Mr. Tolan?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
All members voted to adjourn, so the meeting is adjourned for executive session. Thank you all. Thanks for everyone watching online. Take care.